Good evening, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Dearborn Public Schools Board of Education. It's November 11th, 2019. Could we have a roll call, please?
Hussein Barry.
I believe he is en route from Ann Arbor and we all know that the weather today is a little bit iffy, so he will be coming but a little bit late.
Mary Lane.
Here.
Roxanne McDonald is on her way back from Traverse City at the state board meetings. Michael Mead.
Here.
Adam Mosip.
Here.
James Thorpe. Present. President Petlicoff.
Here. Next, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag will be done by David Mustenin.
Good evening. Honored for me to lead the pledge tonight on this Veterans Day and very appropriate to be here, so thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mustenin.
You're welcome.
No certificates for you today. If anybody is unaware, we are in a little bit of a snow globe tonight, and so I thank everybody who took, made the effort to come out tonight. We did cancel most of our evening events, but the board meeting goes on no matter what. We're like the postman used to be, rain and snow. So, our agenda is going to be somewhat altered, so I just wanted to make everybody aware because some of the speakers were unable to get here, and so we are going to have an abbreviated agenda in some form. So I want everybody to be aware of that. Next item, please.
Superintendent's update, agenda items.
Good evening. I'm Jill Chokel, Executive Director of Student Achievement, and it's a privilege to represent Dr. Maleko at tonight's board meeting. Dr. Maleko has been scheduled for the past few months to be in Washington DC, accepting the National Blue Ribbon Award for our Lindbergh Elementary School, as well as an opportunity to finish up with his Michigan State Superintendent of the Year activities. So he is not joining us, and this is actually the first board of education meeting that he has missed in over five years.
But he is out there still representing us.
Yes, he is. He spent several hours on the runway today waiting to leave, so he sends his greetings. Next, retirements. We have two retirements, Raeda Akrush with 19 and one-third year, and Kristin Gavsky with nine and one-third years. We thank them for their service and like to congratulate them. So, Dr. Maleko made a post on his blog last week that he wanted me to share with you regarding the outcome of the bond election, and he would like to start out by thanking the Community Infrastructure Task Force that spent months studying the district's needs. A little over a year ago, that group recommended the priorities included in the bond and that the district pursue a bond that would not increase the tax rate. He also would like to thank the board, parents, and staff members who went above and beyond in their efforts to share information on the BRICS bond with the community prior to November 5th. Specifically, he appreciates the tireless efforts of the Citizens for Dearborn Schools, a group of community volunteers who spent countless hours advocating for the passage of the BRICS bond. Dr. Maleko commits to moving forward to continue his work with the Board of Education as they provide direction on how to proceed. The district is not going to be able to fund the level of work proposed in the BRICS bond from the general fund, which has an annual budget of about $230 million. Prioritizing the most needed infrastructure projects will likely require reductions from other parts of the budget that may impact staffing levels, curriculum, or other services. While the outcome of the bond shows a part of the community did not agree with this proposal, we are hoping that anyone who had concerns about the BRICS bond will step forward, join the district dialogue, and present possible solutions for the infrastructure, capacity, and security needs. Dr. Maleko concludes by thanking all staff members for always being ready to fulfill our vision of putting students first. Our students are very fortunate to have this dedicated staff of professionals in their schools, and he is honored to be the superintendent in this great district.
Now, I would like to also add the voice of the board and any other board members who would like to contribute their thoughts as well, are going to speak at this time. I understand and want to thank all of those who took a lot of time and commitment to put forth their efforts in a plan that they believed in and that the board, quite frankly, believed in. We voted unanimously to put that on the ballot. It's unfortunate that we didn't have the outcome that we had hoped for. We heard a lot of different voices. Our efforts now are going to have to be, how do we compromise these new voices? Voices that had a variety of differences to them. We heard, I heard many people saying, "I don't want to pay any more taxes." I heard a variety of people saying, "We're willing to pay more. We just want new schools, new buildings." I heard people saying that they doubted our transparency, or our ethics, or our numbers. There were such a variety of voices out there. And now we have to move forward, because we, as a board, have a responsibility to provide the best learning environment for our staff and our students. That's one of our duties, and we have to find a way to fulfill that duty. But we can't do it on our own. We don't get the funding anymore from the state. We're last in place of having any kind of funding increases. We don't have the money sitting in a bank account, ready to move forward with the improvements that we need and that we know will enhance the learning environment for our students. But we also heard those voices. We recognized that by 470 votes, we lost an opportunity, and we will have to move forward now in finding another opportunity in order to commit to our schools and to the city as a whole, because without strong schools, you don't have a strong community. So now we are going to have to have that conversation again, but we have a very limited time in order to produce results within the frame that people had anticipated in the past. And that's what's going to make this so difficult, because those compromises aren't going to get everybody what they want, and that's the reality of today's choices. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood, and I would like to ask anybody in this audience, especially the parents, and I see a number of them in the audience from the Dearborn Parents for Better Schools, that David Mustenin has a list for you to sign in on and provide your contact information and name, so that we are sure to include you in the conversation that we have moving forward. But this conversation's going to happen very quickly. We have to get moving on Plan B, so to speak, and we are going to be looking for all those interested parties to contribute their suggestions, their thoughts, their concerns, so that we can move forward as soon as possible. I'm going to open it up to the board members. Yes, Trustee Lane?
Yeah, I'd like to make a statement too. I'd like to express my feelings about the bond, hoping that I won't get too emotional. I feel very sorry about the failure of the bond, because public education in this country, public service, great public parks, libraries, all of that has been under attack, and we've had move after move toward privatization. So, the reality is, though, that all of us can't afford our own library, or park, or whatever. We need the public good. We need the greater public good for the greater number. So I feel very badly. I did not work as hard as I should for the bond's passage. For the last few years, I've been working on writing something, and I haven't been out as much. I haven't been in the community as much, and I apologize for that. I did not know a lot of the details of the bond. I got asked at meetings, "Well, why are we even, why do we even have boilers? Why don't we have, like, forced air furnaces?" So there's so much public misinformation, but I don't feel that a lot of that was brought up beforehand, and I don't feel that a lot of it was brought out in a question atmosphere that people wanted an answer. So, I'm sorry about that, those questions that I couldn't answer, and I apologized to everyone for that, particularly the staff, but also mostly the educational community and, most importantly, the students. As a consequence of this failure, next year, our budget is impacted $1.5 million immediately. We're not talking about five years out. There's not time for this stuff. Next year, we have cuts coming. We're going to have to cut $1.5 million next year, another $1.5 million after that, and that's without any emergencies or any other problems, which we could easily have. We've all, those of us that have been on for a while, we know that a pipe can blow and woodwork gym can be flooded, and then we have to replace the floor. Those type of things can happen all the time. So, we're going to be, I think we need an emergency situation. The board is going to meet pretty soon in a study session. We need to start immediately talking about what we do. And like I say, I was asked by a bunch of people, I feel so badly, that we have lost our reputation, or we are losing our reputation for great education in Dearborn. People asked me, I was at a party, and some people said, "What happened in Dearborn? I thought you guys supported bonds." And, you know, it's a sorrowful thing, but we are going to have to go into cuts mode, so I would suggest, President Petlicoff, that we put together a cuts committee. As you mentioned, we had people that worked very hard on our bond, and I'm so grateful for them, because they put in a lot of time that I didn't put in.
And this was an emotional decision that occurred for them, because they were so vested in the outcome.
They were very vested. They went and they looked at bathrooms. For example, I looked at the bathroom behind the auditorium at Fordson, and I was shocked. I don't think that's been renovated since 1950. But our needs are great. There were mistakes made, but I would, and people caught those, and I appreciate that. The state would have caught those anyways. We don't put in, when we request money, it all goes to the state for review, so projects wouldn't have been done that weren't approved by the state. But, that being said, we had people, a group of people who were very active, who put out a lot of flyers to defeat the bond, so those people should be called upon now to join a cuts committee. So, I noticed one of the names was Albert Abass. I'd like to nominate him for the cuts committee. Another person who spoke at one of the meetings that I was at was Dr. Barry. So, Abass and Barry can be put on the cuts committee. And then there's some other people, I don't know, Sandy Bender, or Buster, or something or another like this. These people that were posting, I'd like to have them sent invitations to a committee, so that we can talk about, do we cut travel? Do we cut emergency, do we do only emergency repairs? We're probably going to have to cut our building at site fund now, so that we cannot start digging into our fund balance. So I would like to have the anti-bond cuts committee with a couple of those people who were just mentioned, Abass, Barry, other people who have cuts proposals. But I would like to suggest that, for the rest of us, that next year is going to be a very difficult year. Already tensions are running very high. We need to have lots of input, but above everything else, we need people to be more reflective, people to show more courtesy, people to understand that teachers make mistakes, we make mistakes, we're doing, everyone does our best, but slogans are not solutions. We need real solutions. We need cooperation with each other. We need courtesy. Everyone needs to lower the tenor of the discussion, so that we emphasize cooperation. So, those are some of my thoughts on the bond, and as I say, I hope we'll move forward and do our best. Thank you.
Yes, Trustee Thorpe.
I'd echo a lot of what Trustee Lane and President Petlicoff said. I was approached by several people in the last week, and the common item that I kept hearing is, "What's next?" And I would tell them that, well, the needs in the buildings aren't going away. Roofs will still need to be repaired. Windows will need to be replaced. Security is still an issue at several of the buildings. So we're going to have to come back again and, just as was stated before, reach out to all the groups and see if compromise can be attained on some of the things and provide more information, and do our best to make sure that everyone is informed as best we can do. There were several people that said they hadn't heard anything about this until August. Well, that's when we approved it. Before that, we were just in planning stage. And then they were saying they didn't see it, because they didn't look in the newspaper, or in the first bell publication, or see it mentioned online, or get the flyers. There's only so much we can do. So, my hope is that we reach out to all community groups, so people have a chance to know what we're talking about, what we're looking for, and why we need to do this.
Trustee Mosip.
Did you want to speak, Dr. Mead? Sorry, okay. Well, I'd like to thank all the voters for coming out on November 5th and casting their vote and letting us know that this is a solution that we presented to them, and they said no. Whether with 10 votes or 1,000 votes, it was defeated. And we really have to do a lot of soul-searching and say, "What are the reasons why it failed?" And I have my own reasons, and I can name why this bond failed. I did have my reservations, which were stated earlier, about how quickly we want to move this, and I believe Trustee Barry mentioned this in the June meeting. But I did go with the team, and I believe that I did my best on my effort to spread the facts, factual information. I went to neighborhood associations. I went to mosques. I talked with people who were totally opposed to the bond. I went on radio shows and talked about the bond. I was personally attacked, and my words were even taken out of context to say that this bond was just studied for three months, when in reality, when I got appointed to this board, I started studying. That was my first task. I started studying this three months onward, until we approved it in July. So they took that three months to say, "This board has been studying it for only three months," when in reality, you have been studying it for two years. So, the process was there, and we approved it, and everything is open for everybody. Now, I heard also a lot of talk in the community, when I went to spread the facts about the bond, why there is wasteful spending in our district. Why are we spending money left and right on things that we should not be spending enough? And I tell these voters and residents, "You elect board members who are going to be your watchdogs for the taxpayers' money and the money that we're entrusted that we get from the state. This is a public education. It's not a charter school run by a management company." So, we are tasked, and we are charged, and we do this swearing of oath, that we're going to preserve these monies for the citizens. And you have also the option to be on this podium and ask us on every single contract, "Why are we awarding this vendor or this vendor that much money?" So, everything, the system is there, the process is there for people to follow. The system is not corrupt. I applied to be on this board multiple times, and I ran for elections and lost, and respected the process. So I wish that people, when they talk about the process and that everything is corrupt and that we're spending money left and right, that they get involved. And I'm really glad that we have some new faces today in this audience that are going to, and obviously thousands of residents who are watching us and listening to what we say. So I'm not going to put the blame on my colleagues if they didn't do their best, as Trustee Lane mentioned. I think we are very busy with our lives, and we're tasked with this, a very major task, and we have double duty. We don't have just this institution. We also have another institution that we're taking it for. But we signed up for this. Nobody forced us to come and run for office and be on this board. So, I do appreciate everybody who voted, whether you voted yes, that you believe in our schools and you believe that this bond will actually help our schools, and I thank those who voted no. And as you said, President Petlicoff, some voters were very, just tired of taxes. Unfortunately, we live in a very high-tax city, and we have to look at, not just where the money goes for the schools, we have to look at why we're paying 15% to Wayne County. Yeah, they do provide their own services, but I don't think it's a lot for Dearborn to take. Why do we pay 6% for a sewerage project that did not save us in 2014? So I hope the residents who are complaining about their taxes coming to our schools, that they would also complain and hold the city officials accountable for these monies, because at the end of the day, we're paying these tax monies. Why is this board getting a huge tax break on their property tax when Adal Mosip on Charles is paying his full taxes? Why a polluter is paying 50% of their water bill, because they're the largest user of water? And I pay my water bill every month on time. I know this board does not have the authority to be on the city council, but I also will ask that, if we're going to talk about taxes, we have to talk about taxes from 1% to 100%. And you can rest assured that the people that you elect on this board will have to ask where this money is going, for every single contract. Now, you excuse me, I'm very emotional about this, because I put a lot of time and effort to get this bond passed, and I'll say this, that I'm saying it publicly, that even if this bond passed with a 5% margin, I would still be very upset, because it will have a bad taste in people's mouth. I would love to propose something for the future, when we move forward, and my hopes is that we get majority. Obviously, we're never going to get, we're never going to get supermajority on a bond, because people will vote for no taxes whatsoever, even if you're providing them the best service possible. I was at the MASP, the Michigan Association of School Boards Leadership Conference in Traverse City this past weekend, and I saw city after city district, or school district after school district, passing sinking funds, bonds. And unfortunately, it's because the state is leaving us stranded. We're not getting enough money to operate our schools, and our schools are very old. And you can take a look at the city of Ann Arbor, where they passed a $1 billion bond. And obviously, their taxes are low, and now they're getting higher. But they do also have plans to replace most of their schools. Actually, my manager sends his kids to Ann Arbor schools, and he told me that his taxes went up, but he voted yes, because he believes in the future of his kids. And unfortunately, in Dearborn, I don't know where we at with public education. So, I apologize for being very emotional about this, because it is dear to my heart that unfortunately, now we have to scramble for next year and the years after. But moving forward, I hope that we create a committee that will listen to all of the residents. We did have a great infrastructure committee, which I do appreciate each one of them for putting in the time and the effort voluntarily to help us with the assessment, but I wish that we can have a committee that's going to listen to these voters and tell them, "This is the need. What do you think we should do? Do we go with a sinking bond? Do we go with another bond? Do you want new schools?" As some people are saying, "We want state-of-the-art new schools that are not going to have a high maintenance cost." Well, these have a huge cost as well to build them.
In a timeframe that is extended.
And not only that, where are we going to place our students while we're demolishing one school and rebuilding it? Now, there are many out-of-the-box ideas. Ann Arbor actually had two of their schools flooded. Their boilers got destroyed, so they had to send their kids to University of Michigan buildings while they're building now brand-new schools. They're leasing from the University of Michigan. So, moving forward, I would love that the same energy that people put to defeat this bond, that they would have the same energy to help us come up with a plan and pass this plan, I would hope, next year, so our schools would stay in act in good conditions, and we do not have to do the deep cuts that Trustee Lane was talking about. I do also appreciate the district and Dr. Maleko for pushing this bond. I think he did his best. However, I do, at the same time, I don't want to blame on the district for not doing much, but I believe the messaging should have improved, saying this is not a new tax increase, and then when the voter goes on the ballot and sees this is a new tax increase, it is a new tax increase. It is a new bond. And that's what I was telling people in my presentations. I'm sorry the district is broadcasting it as, "Yeah, your taxes will stay the same." But it is a new bond, because we are renewing older, expiring bonds that are going to expire in 2022.
We were, not renewing, we would be issuing new bonds to replace.
Replace them. So we should have said that. We should not say, "Your taxes will stay the same."
Well, it's still.
But it is still a new bond, and it is still a new tax, because that's what they were seeing on their ballot. Now, we did have a ballot PDF on the website, which talks about, also, in the bottom, it was saying, when the voter, and actually, it was to my surprise, there were so many documents that I did not review the ballot language. In the bottom, it was saying, "These monies cannot be used for infrastructure or repairs." And we've been throwing the word "repairs" the whole time, and these monies are being used but for replacements.
And improvements.
Well, the example that I got from Mr. Wall, that this money would be used to replace a boiler, not to fix it.
Right.
So, there's a major difference that we needed to make sure that voters know when they go to the polls and circle that yes and no. For those who do read, I know some already go predetermined, and they selected their box. But unfortunately, we did not do a great job of that. So, once again, I'm sorry, excuse me for being emotional. I thank all of the voters for making their call. You were heard, and I hope that you will be with us in the drawing, on the drawing board while we craft a solution that we hopefully will get the majority of you to agree, because we will never give up on public education. And I challenge also all of my colleagues to talk to the other school board members in other districts to pressure the state to give us more funding. Proposal A said, "We're going to leave capital projects and infrastructure to districts to deal with."
To the locals.
To the citizens. And that's not fair. That's not equitable. Some districts, unfortunately, are fed up with taxes. So, we have to do our part and go out of our way. I know it's not part of our rules. We didn't sign up for this, to go to the state, to go to Lansing, and talk to legislatures, and work with our own to get more money for our schools, but unfortunately, we're left with that option. My last message to the voters, I hope that when we present this new plan, that you would come up to us and let us know what you think of the plan and ways to improve it, and ways to make sure that it's the best optimal plan. We're not going to please everybody, but at least we can get the majority. So thank you so much, President Petlicoff, and my colleagues, for listening to me speaking this long.
Yeah, I was just, I probably don't need to say this. First of all, the students of Dearborn deserve it, so Trustee Mosip's emotions are all of our emotions. our emotions. That's why we're sitting here because we read hours and hours of this sometimes boring stuff. And we do it because we believe in our city, we believe in education, and we believe in these students. But my quandary is that this is a huge, complicated system. It's a very complex subject. Probably, one of the most legitness areas of law is education law. It's really hard to simplify public finance, the parts of buildings. All of this is really difficult to communicate to people. I appreciate Trustee Mosip's complaint and the way the message was delivered. I just would like to hear from people, how do you deliver a complex message in a simple form? How do you say to people, the reason we pay taxes is because we want a civilized society? How do you explain that going through bids, there are reasons we have regulations, that we go through bids, we bid out things? It's not the same as a deal that somebody cuts with their cousin or their neighbor or whomever. So in the next year, we're gonna see a lot of simplification of subjects. We're gonna see a lot of fake news. We're gonna see so much social media, and a lot of it is very negative and very destructive. We'd probably all be better off if we cut a lot of that out and, as I say, ask questions and understand more and investigate more because these are all complex subjects.
Trust, okay. Dr. Mead, and then Trustee Barry, if you want to. Everybody's having a moment of commentary on the bond since you came in late. Yes, Trustee.
Well, I'm just concerned about trust factor.
Yeah.
Because all of our leaders in the city who were elected by the citizens all supported the bond. They could see the value of it. We had a citizens committee that did a very good thorough job of going from building to building and identifying our needs.
With professionals.
With professional engineers that told us the bones are good for these old buildings, it's worthwhile to replenish them. And yet, people voted against it. So I have to look at myself and think, I guess they don't trust me, and they don't trust this board, and they don't trust the city council. When we are elected by the people to represent the people, and we think we did a fairly decent job. We watched all of the information, we read all the information, and we thought this was a very important bond for the future of education in our city. And the people in the city said, no, they don't like it. So I'm thinking, what is going to be the future? No matter what program we come up with, people not gonna trust us? That what we put before them is the best thinking of all the people that they elected? So that's my major concern for the future.
Particularly when people don't wanna read the information themselves. There was a lot of information that was out, and most people don't wanna participate in this. So how do you get information to people then?
Yeah, that's another problem. We've got everything on.
Communication was a huge deal here. Some listened to neighbors, friends, family members, rather than looking at the facts that were on the website. I heard a lot of misinformation being shared over and over again, things that even surprised me. I'd never heard the one about we had been offered free Ford land to build a building. That was a first for me. And yet, that's what I heard being communicated from parents, that we somehow had land given to us by Ford and we turned it down. That kind of misinformation sows the seed of doubt. Once that doubt is planted in people's minds, they vote no. That's just an automatic. If they're not certain about what this is about and that there's a question in their mind, and that's what this campaign did, it sowed doubt. Whether it was truthful or not, doubt was placed in people's minds, and they chose to vote no rather than to vote on something that they thought could be misleading to them. And that's a challenge that we have to overcome. And you're right, Dr. Mead, is how do we get people to trust us? We were elected to be the stewards of their money in order to provide a constitutional responsibility to educate our students publicly. That's our responsibility, and that's what we were elected to do. And to think, and to call into question our ethics and our desire to produce the best compromise that we could that was fair to the taxpayers while delivering the responsible choices for the buildings in our district, I don't know how to overcome that when I don't know where people are turning their ears towards to get their information from because we only have so many opportunities. First bell comes to every household. I think it's thrown in the trash by the vast majority of people, and they've never read it, never heard about it. We sent out, we did not have the funding from our candidate committee to produce multiple layers of mailers because it couldn't come from school district funds. It had to come from private donations in order to send that out. The other campaign group clearly had more resources than we did and was able to spend more money on distributing the information that they chose to distribute. We had a website. People said they didn't know about it, didn't look at it. The opportunities to disseminate the factual information, we went to every school that we could. We utilized our PTAs in order to get the parents in the room. It still wasn't enough. I'm not certain, moving forward, that we're gonna find a compromise that is still going to be successful because we, like I said, I heard so many different voices out there. I heard many, many people angry about paying taxes, period. I heard many people saying, I wanna spend more, I want bigger, I want newer, I want this, which there is no way we're going to convince those people who don't wanna pay taxes to vote yes. I heard a lot of mistrust of how we were spending the money. It's unfortunate that people who don't participate here at the boardroom and don't see the transparency that we offer. Every contract is looked at, every contract is voted on. The opportunity for everybody to look at it is there. Go on our district website. I know people who've never seen our district website, have never taken the time or opportunity. You'll Google Amazon, but you won't Google Dearborn Public Schools, I guess. I'm not certain what the answer is to this, but we clearly have an issue and the communication. And I will tell you, whatever community members we bring into another room, I am going to ask you to be reflective, be respectful, and realistic when you walk into that room and not assume that everything that we give you, of all the work we have already done for the past two years to make the decisions that we originally made, was just a bunch of nonsense and that you wanna throw it out the window with your own facts, your own ideas, and not even incorporate the efforts that were put forward by the infrastructure committee the first go-round. Because it was done with committed community members and with a professional team who understood how to value the buildings and price out the bids. And these weren't bids, these were guestimates in order to get the ballot started. The actual bidding process wasn't going to occur. So quite frankly, I am stymied by this at this point. Trustee Barry, did you have anything you would like to add?
You know what, I don't know if Trustee Thorpe had a chance to speak.
Yes, he did. Everybody did.
Trustee Lane, Trustee.
Yes, they all did.
Did a wonderful job, but my comments are going towards Dr. Mead a little bit. Dr. Mead, rest assure, rest assure, we're gonna be fine. We are gonna be fine here. Because I'm gonna quote a good friend of yours here, Mr. John McDonald, one of the most intelligent people I've ever met in my life, okay? And his exact words about a year ago is, "The Dearborn community will always support its educational institution." My concerns are, and I said my concerns back a few months ago. I don't like going backwards, but, you know, moving forward, we need to be careful. I was very, very, very concerned about going out this year, not for political reasons, not for any other reasons, that the people that were gonna come out and vote this year were usually voting against bonds, voting against money. It was just bad timing that people were very, very upset with their taxes in Dearborn. And these are not the enemies. These are investors in this district. These are constituents. The messages on both sides I've heard, I was very disappointed, very, very disappointed. People were asking me, why, why, why? Right away, I was very disappointed. And the other thing I mentioned at that same meeting is I said, information, we need to get information out. So yeah, I understand. I'll tell everybody here in the audience that we've been talking about this for two years. Shame on you, where have you been the last two years? Get involved. But I was still concerned when we have, tonight was supposed to be middle school.
Conferences.
Conferences. You know, one of the middle schools might have like 800 students in there. We'll be lucky if we get 50, 60, 70 parents there. People say, oh, I didn't know. We know, we're the professionals. We know people don't open up their emails. We know people get that first bell right here, and most of them put it to read it later and probably never get to it. I was very, very concerned about going out this year and the short amount of time that we had to put this word out. When we've started campaigning, I was disgusted. I was disgusted with both sides, what was going on. I was disgusted with the message that we were putting out there. Tom Wall stood right there, and I got nothing but utmost respect for the man. I mean, he was God-sent to us a few years ago. He stood there and said, no, Mr. Barry, we will not go out there and say this is not a tax increase. But there was a lot of people saying that this is not a tax increase. And I've shared my feelings with my president here and my superintendent, that this is wrong. Can't tell people one thing and then turn around and say different things, mixed messages, get people confused. And when people get confused, this is what happens, Dr. Mead. I can trust, trust me on this one, trust me on this one. There are people in this room, in this room that pushed for a no vote, that talked to me, and I said, yes, we need the money. Then I talked to them, why we need the money? They're like, why didn't you say it? Why didn't you guys put it out that way? We didn't deliver the message that we should've. There was this man in here right now, I'm not gonna call him out, but he said, you know what, I would have no problem going out, and instead of 240, let's ask for 360. But give us a building or two with this money. They want bricks and mortar. Biggest reason this, I mean, look at the numbers. I mean, every time I talk to any of my colleagues, I'm driving Trustee Thorpe crazy with this. Numbers don't lie. 500 votes, a little less shot than 500 votes in absentee votes, that's why we shot this thing down. I'm kinda surprised it wasn't even more than that with the absentee, but with all of our elected officials going out and pushing and talking to people in their department is what brought us so close. 51-49? We would be sitting here happy if it was 51-49 the other way. I would be just as disgusted, to be honest with you, Dr. Mead. This should've been 65, 68%. No doubt in my mind, no doubt in my mind, we have all the key players in this room. I've talked to tens of people just today that couldn't make it out because of the weather. They're listening to us right now, they wanna get involved, and thank you. And I will call you out. You stepped out, you stepped up. I will call you out if you disappear after this. I will call you out by name if you disappear. You need to stay involved. This is your district, these are our students, these are our babies we're trying to educate. There's this experiment right now in America that's been going on for hundreds and hundreds of years. It's called public schools. Without public schools, this society, just think what would happen. Just think what would happen. Talk about poverty, talk about crime, talk about everything else we talk about. The neighboring cities, what's happening there? I'm very, very happy with the direction things are going with our neighboring cities. But no, Dr. Mead, rest assure, we will go out, I don't know how fast we're gonna be doing this, but if we go out next November, when over 40,000 people will come out and vote, it will get approved, and it won't be 51, 52%. It'll be in the mid to high 60s like it's always been in Dearborn. So I like that smile, keep it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Can I?
But yeah, because it is bad weather out there. I would like to make sure we get everybody home safely.
Absolutely. Just to respond to Dr. Mead's about the elected officials, I think, I thank the elected officials for also supporting this bond, but I don't think it was their job to go out to the community and explain what this bond is about. It was the administration's job, and it was also our job. I think when we talk about folks saying, we need brand-new schools and we're willing to pay more, and folks are saying we're tired of taxes, we're talking about an equity problem and a huge economic gap in our city. And I think we really need to look at Ferndale Public Schools, a presentation that I attended at MASP, which blew me away, by the way. And I would love to, as a request for information, to get their presentation, which I do have with me. But if their superintendent is willing to come and address us and talk to us on how they are solving their equity problem, because Ferndale is a very high affluent city, but in their public school, they do have Oak Park, which is very underprivileged, underserved. The economic gap in their district is huge, and I think it's the same for Dearborn. And I'm not saying we're gonna emulate others or look at others and do what they do. We have our own unique story to tell as well. But I think it is worthwhile, our time, to look at what others are doing so well and so great that we can emulate. And by the way, they're going for $150 million in bond because in the past three years, what they did about equity, their enrollment is going up, when it was historically going down over the years. So thank you for your time.
Trustee Thorpe, you know what, we're Dearborn. No, no, other people look towards us to find out how we do it. We know how to do it. With all due respect to your comments and all due respect.
You mean, Trustee Mosip? You said, Trustee Thorpe. Are you responding to?
I miss you, that's why I said that.
That's good.
But Dearborn, we know how to do it. I remember, you know, when Trustee Lane was at the table and President Peskov was at the table, when we woke up to an 18, 19 million dollar hit overnight when Snyder took over. People were telling us, people were standing at that podium telling us, go talk to Levonia, see what they're doing.
Oh, yeah, we had a lot of talk to Levonia.
Where at the same time, Levonia was calling, God bless his soul, Mr. Wiston, saying, what are you doing? How you doing? How you solving these problems? No, no, we know how to do it in Dearborn. We just gotta be all-inclusive, we gotta put the right message out, right information out. When we go out to talk to people, if they don't know, it's our job to educate them. It's not our job to attack them.
Absolutely.
It's our job to educate them. There's nobody in this room, there's nobody that, you know, other than, you know, people that said, I've never voted for a bond. I had somebody, you know what was said a couple days ago? Somebody said, I've never voted, I've never not voted for a bond. This year, this first time in my life, I didn't vote. Because they didn't wanna vote no, because they were confused. That's on us, we're the professionals. Let's get the right message out. We have people that wanna talk to us, we'll be more than happy to talk to them, everybody at the table. Let's get the right team going. We all, this is, we all own this district. This is not seven board members making decisions. This is not superintendent making decisions. We all own this district. It's our baby. Moving forward, I welcome everybody. But no, Ferndale, God bless, Ann Arbor, God bless. No, this is Dearborn. Everybody looks. Nationwide, people look towards Dearborn to learn, to learn from Dearborn.
Trustee Barry, I don't disagree with you, and that's what I said. We have a unique story to tell. We're very unique, we're very different, but it doesn't hurt to really learn from others.
Understood. There's nothing wrong with.
And some ideas will inspire our own ideas.
Absolutely. And I think we do have an equity problem in this city, and we really, as a school district, we need to be part of solving that problem.
I don't wanna cut anybody short, but because the weather is so bad, I would like to make sure that everybody can get out of here in a timely fashion. So I hope that everybody's ready to.
I budgeted two hours to get it from Ann Arbor, bringing my daughter home from work. It took me three hours to get it.
I told, I warned you when I talked to you that I thought that would happen.
This is what they're known as, shortcuts, too.
All right, can we go on to the next item, please?
Non-agenda items.
Okay, today is Veterans Day, November 11th, and this is an opportunity to remember and thank all of those who served our country. I attended a ceremony at Lori School today with Dr. Maleko, Mrs. Peterson, and Mr. Mustedin, as well as Representative Dr. Maleko, at a ceremony at the city of Dearborn. Service to our country is a tremendous sacrifice, and all should be honored and remembered. So we thank veterans for their service.
Absolutely.
Next one.